Dave.
I do that several times, they pay me.
I see James Swink now.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see y'all. Get a window into everyone's homes. Is that an antler lamp, Dave?
I think so. Right, where is it? Right there? Yep. I'm in my man cave, also known as my wife's office.
Still don't see John. I don't know where John is.
There's Dr. Butters.
Oh, Dr. Butters. I was reading an article in the Reader's Digest that was about doctors that cured their own diseases. Wouldn't that be nice if you could be a doctor and cure your own disease? That would keep me busy the rest of my life. Well, still no John, and it's five o'clock.
Yeah, I'm still, let's see. I still don't see him.
That boy, John. Well. Janine, who's next in the rotation to do the opening and pledge?
Uh, who sits left of John?
Me? No, I did. I don't anymore. Never mind.
That'd be me.
You sit to the left of John? No.
There's the chimes. Well, do Craig, do you sit left of John?
Yes.
Okay, would you mind doing our opening this time? What's that?
I only sat by him for like three meetings.
That's why we can't remember who's next to us. Well, let's go ahead.
I think I got him.
Okay.
Charlie.
There he is. John's probably been yelling at us because I haven't been able to see his name. You're on, John. Go ahead and turn your camera on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can.
Well, I can't see. I can hear you, but I can't.
He hasn't got Katie there to run it.
Yeah, that's right. Well, I usually can run it, but I kept, I tried the eight oh one two four seven seven six one seven seven. It says not valid. So I had to go back to the old way. But if you can hear me, I can see you. Everything's cool. Can you hear me?
All right.
You can hear me?
We can, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm ready to say yahoo. Let's get going.
All right.
Is that what you want me for?
There, that's the gavel pound. We'll start the meeting. John, you are scheduled to provide our opening and our pledge. So we'll turn the time to you.
I'd like to do the opening in the form of a prayer, if I may. Our kind Father in heaven, as we gather before thee today, we're grateful for the opportunity we have to live in America. We're grateful for the opportunity we had to be members of Cache County, members of the council. And we're grateful for all the many blessings we have. We ask thee to bless us in this time of trial. Help us to learn and gain from it. Help us to come out stronger and be better. Bless us to make the proper decisions as we work to guide this county through a crisis and as we work to make life better for those who come after us. We ask thee to bless this country and bless those that lead it. Bless those that still protect those many liberties which we enjoy. These things we ask for and pray for in thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. My pledge.
The United States.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Have you had an opportunity to review the agenda? It's an amended agenda, agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Uh, the minutes from our last meeting of April 28th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes as written.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, uh, are there any follow-up to the minutes? All right, we'll move ahead then. County Executive Butters. He'll turn the time to you then for your report.
Thank you. My report will be brief. For a COVID-19 update, over the weekend, we had several new cases. But they they were isolated or only involved new families, I guess I should say. And being trapped and isolated at this time, we had no new cases. We had two new cases on Monday and zero today. Currently, we're still under the phased guidelines in the orange category. That is supposed to remain in place until Friday. So I, I'm anticipating an announcement by the governor now on Friday is what we will be. So I believe that's where we're at right now. And if any of you are interested and do not have the current phased guidelines of 4.1, let us know and we'll be sure and email those to you. I think they came from the Utah Association of Counties to each one of you.
I, I might just mention that I was able to sign into the Zoom meeting with UAC and the Utah League, League of Cities and Towns, meeting with Lieutenant Governor Cox, and he mentioned uh, this afternoon that the governor is very much on board with regionalizing the uh, categories of where we stand. And so I, it sounded like there's good possibility that if our health department is on board, we'll be able to, to move ahead with what we'd like to do outside of what the the state as a whole may be doing on Friday.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. And also, we had a fair and rodeo executive committee meeting yesterday. Uh, the general consensus in that meeting was forward with the planning of the fair and the rodeo. And we will, we will put on that celebration and follow the, the phase guidelines, whatever whatever situation we're in, whether it be yellow or green. We are hoping we will not go back to orange if we get moved out of orange by then. We don't want to take a step back, so. We hope that everybody will take it seriously and, and if we do so, I think through proper social distancing sanitation, we'll be able to hold the fair and move forward with that. I think everyone's looking for a celebration. We've had many of them canceled. And the fair might be one of the first ones that we have this summer, so. And it's important we move forward with that. And we are looking at options as far as spreading out the fair and the and allowing it, making it easier for people to socially distance at the, at the fair and also at the rodeo. So there may be there may be a situation where the rodeo will cost, or the fair and the rodeo will cost the county a little bit of money instead of paying for all of its expenses. But we're going to do all that we can to put on the production with, with the, in the most efficient way that we can. So that's the, that's kind of a summary of the the meeting with the fair and the rodeo. We're going to be meeting more often. The theme for the fair this year is Good and Plenty in 2020, so. We're working on that and we'll have that logo up and, and advertising the fair before, before long. And the next item, I want to turn some time over to Bryce. Bryce has been working with the the Public Consulting Group on the draft study for the fire and EMS. So he'll, he'll give us an update on that.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, we have, we've heard from the, the consultants. Their, their name is the Public Consulting Group. And so Public Consulting Group got us a draft of the fire and EMS study. And this is the first draft that we've seen and we went through it and we spoke with the Public Consulting Group again, and we asked them to make a few changes to more closely follow the original intent of the RFP with regards to Sims. And so they are going back to work on that and they should have us a draft by Thursday. On Friday, we've set a meeting to meet with the stakeholder group, the original stakeholder group that, that selected Public Consulting Group. And so we expect to have that report back before that meeting so that we can talk about the future of Sims and a couple of the other recommendations they made in there with regard to a placement of of fire stations and EMS stations throughout the county. So is there any questions or any other parts you wanted me to cover on that, Craig?
That sounds good. Thanks, Bryce. We appreciate it.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Bryce, can you maybe expound a little bit on that survey that you sent us a link and asked us to share it?
Yes.
Can you talk about the purpose and how that's factoring into this, what the Public Consulting Group is doing?
So as you may recall, we initially wanted them to do several regional town halls where they would go out and they would meet with the residents and the county. The county residents to talk with them about what in an EMS delivery system. And because of COVID, we had to cancel those. And so what they came up with at the last moment, and we apologize that it was such a short window, was to do a survey. And they actually got 257 responses. Um, and they shared some of those, the information in the draft report. So we could see how some of the residents responded favorably to some of the ideas in that survey. And so we intend to they intend to put in the appendix of this report the comments that were made, because there are several comments and open-ended questions where you could put a comment in. And so they'll include those comments so that we can take what people wrote and use it to help us, to help guide our efforts as we move forward through this process. And so the survey, but the survey was only open from the 27th of April through the 5th of May. So it was very short timeframe and it wasn't communicated real well. There was a few errors with it, with the survey as well, but um, they feel like they got some good information from residents. And although it doesn't quite compare to, you know, being there and being able to talk to people, we feel like it was kind of the best we could do, given the circumstances.
Thank you, Bryce.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Craig?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I should have questions.
There may be some come up. Uh, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation to consider and approve. It's a proclamation concerning Law Enforcement Week. I'll read that so that anyone who's on the call with us and doesn't have a copy in front of them can hear what the proclamation says. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 13th, 2020 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 10th through the 16th, 2020 as National Law Enforcement Week. And whereas the members of the Cache County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Cache County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency. And that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property by protecting them against violence and disorder. And by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Cache County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, in recognition of all law enforcement officers and in particular, the men and women in the Cache County Sheriff's Office, be it resolved that the Cache County Council and the Cache County Executive, County of Cache, State of Utah hereby proclaim the week of May 10th through May 16th, 2020 as Law Enforcement Week. And call upon all citizens of Cache County and all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And further call upon all citizens of Cache County to honor those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In witness thereof, as Chair of the Cache County, of the County Council and County Executive, we have here unto, set our hands, hand this day, this 12th day of May, 2020. Signed, Cache County Carl Ward, Cache County Chair, Cache County Council Chair, and Craig W. Butters, Cache County Executive. Attested by Jill N. Zollinger, Cache County Clerk Auditor. That's the proclamation. Is there?
Second.
Important to prove, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
Can I ask a question, Sheriff Jensen? How many Sheriff's deputies do we have who we have lost in the line of duty?
Can you hear me, Gina?
Yeah.
Five. We've got five and Logan City's got one throughout history, and our last being in 2004.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's more than I would have expected. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much for the support.
Thanks, Sheriff Jensen, for everything you do.
Thanks, Barbara.
Okay, we have item number eight, Department or Committee Reports. Cache County Auditor's Report of 2020's Tax Sale. Not too much to report there. Let's see, is there somebody who's an attendee that wants to make any comments about that or Craig?
Carl, this is Jill, if you want me to comment on it.
Yes, thank you, Jill.
Well, happy to announce that we won't have a tax sale this year. It's been canceled. We had two properties that needed to take care of some taxes. One of them was in a bankruptcy, so we can't do anything with that. And the other one was redeemed. So happy that we won't be having a tax sale.
That is good news. Zero is the best number in that case.
Yes, it is. And I think you all got the information as far as the tax sale history and where we're at. And I think we've made good progress on getting properties off the tax sale.
I think it, not only good, it's phenomenal. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. A lot of good help from more than my office. The Treasurer's Office has worked hard on it as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on, we don't have any Board of Equalization matters, no public hearings and no pending action. So we'll move to paragraph 12, Initial Proposals for Consideration of Action. Uh, 12A is consideration of the 2019 COG funding recommendations. And we've had an opportunity to read over those and to see what changes were made. We approved part, part of those fundings in our last meeting, but we have some additional ones to approve tonight. Are there any questions about any of that funding?
I had a couple of questions, and I see that Jeff Youngs wants us and hope he can answer them. Question that I had was, um, I see the way that that money got reallocated. And I wondered why it didn't go, didn't get spread out to projects like number seven, number eight, number nine, farther down the list. Um, and was hoping that Mayor Young could give us an explanation of why the COG did what the COG did.
You bet. Uh, thank you for having us on the great Zoom conferencing that we all love to get things done. But I, I do appreciate it. And that's actually a good question. One of the things that the council, remember as I we were parting the last time as we were kind of working through the adjustments and the Providence scenario was the reality that if we, if we follow next in the list, that would be basically going to the County Council and myself as Chair of the COG. Creating, if nothing else, just a perception issue of how funding is done and when it's, when it's derived. The good part about being open about that is that was a conversation that we discussed with the mayors. Because one of the things I didn't want hidden is I didn't want it to be misrepresented on the County Council's uh, perspective that it was so that the county could receive more funds, which obviously was not the case, but we had to make sure that that was discussed so that it could be understood with all of the mayors. And so in the discussion that we had, it was very clear that, that the money would go to Richmond and the county. One of the things that has kind of opened up a lot of discussions is not just the Providence one, but also some of the smaller cities that didn't receive funding. And as you can see, if you look on the rotation, Cache County was on the rotation for the Benson Bridge rehabilitation, which the mayors agreed was, was a priority on the list. If you look at priority of what was done with that one, it was the fifth one right behind Providence and received funding. And is what that did is by Providence, who dropped out, they officially rescinded and are tweaking and changing what they're doing. Um, that then opened up the additional funding that allowed the Benson Bridge to be was an additional $11,461. Um, as well as that then opened up additional funding for the Cache County Richmond Project. Uh, one of the things of clarification that I think is important to, to recognize is the smaller towns don't receive money a lot or in large quantities. So, for example, Richmond, even though we are, I'm Chair on the COG, the last time that Richmond received funds was when Mike Hall was involved almost 15 years ago, and that was to help with a road right by North Cache School uh, to help with the bus parking and facilitate parking along that. That was the last time that we had received COG funding. Um, there were some smaller towns like Trenton who did not receive funding, and they actually felt like there was some confusion with the county side, and they were really torn on whether the county should receive both um, the larger funding that goes to the larger city as well as have access to the rural. This was a discussion with the mayors, and we just talked about it in depth. And the conclusion of the mayors was that how we have a balance still is the best option that we can. It's not perfect, but it's still the best. And the mayors voted and agreed that even though, even though there was a change by the county kicking back Providence and Providence ultimately dropping out and saying they actually want to revisit this, but they want to change some things and do it a little bit differently when they revisit for some COG funding potentially for the 2020 or after year. This allowed us to go back to our regular guidelines and ordinances that we follow the bylaws. And in there, it talks about that once the mayor select the priority level over a six to eight month period, if anything gets kicked out or adjusted, the standard policy that we traditionally follow is that we would still hold to that voting that the COG committee did, which would then basically flow down. So in this one, as you'll see, if you, I don't know if you guys have the paper to see, but basically is what that did is the Benson Project received full funding and part of that funding came out of the rural set aside 11,000. And then the Cache County Richmond Project only received partial funding. But when Providence dropped out, it then automatically went to the Richmond one and, and the county one fulfilling uh, the rest of the requests on that. And then if there was any leftover, it would naturally kick to the next one that was voted in the priority level. Ultimately, is what the mayors felt and I'm in agreement with was that the six to eight months that this was voted on, and we really tried to, to do our best to gauge this, we wanted to try to keep that intact and not have personal opinions of denial or ones that weren't accepted and try to then go back after the fact and split funds to go further on a smaller project. What that would risk is it would be very difficult to replicate that again. So if we allowed a smaller town to receive funds or say the county in Richmond said, okay, we're going to be generous and we're going to allow a hundred thousand dollars out of what we receive to go, and we'll just cut ours a little bit short. Um, the concern is, is how do you replicate that down the road? And how do you keep a system intact that, that you can say is fair and not biased because someone complains more or someone has a way of, of working with certain mayors to get numbers to work that. And so it was ultimately felt that the original way that we did this would keep the best um, overall process together and one we could continue. And so that was a unanimous vote to go ahead and just follow what was already voted on earlier and just kick down the funding to the next project.
Okay, Gina, did that answer your question okay?
Yes, it did. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, we can.
I'll make a motion we adopt it.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and accepted to adopt the Cache County Council of Governments COG recommendation. I'm sorry, what?
I got a question. So when these are, these are currently ranked for 2019. Now in 2020, the new money comes in and you'll rework this whole process for this next year's money. Can new, new proposals come in and then these other lower ranked ones, can they just constantly be suppressed or do they gradually work their, their way up?
So we had that discussion and Jeff did a good job of kind of helping us clarify how this works. The state gave us state guidelines that falls under where the County Council approves this, the COG gives the recommendation. But each year that has to be reevaluated. So technically each one becomes new again that it works in. But the reality that we've noticed over the years that this has been done is when it's reapplied, if it gets denied or taken down, most of the time, the majority of the projects by far will be approved within the, the second or third time, if not the first. So you are correct in the sense. So you are correct in the sense that there, the, the COG in general is aware that if there's, if you submit it different times and fill the importance, it does work its way up. That doesn't mean it has to be that way, but that tends to be. And I had that very discussion with Trenton where they received money last year. I had the discussion that where Richmond had, you know, received project money 15 years ago, we weren't going to be applying again for rural and nor is the county planning on rural. That, that then opens up where additional rural cities have an opportunity. Whereas that way every few years, we end up all getting some funds rather than expecting to have funds every year or have ours always approved with the process. And the hope is, is that's what that allows is that it would over time allow those to be bumped a little bit more.
Okay, my next question was, is it Executive Butters, do you get a report, is there reports sent in as to where, what money has been spent in the past years? What is unfinished? What, what is just sitting in the COG account waiting to be spent? Is there, you know, are there some projects that are, I know there's probably never a project that is under budget or, you know, but-
There, there are some that do go under budget. And then generally they'll come back and request that they can use that funding for an associated project in our community usually. Or else they'll turn it back into the COG. Jeff Gilbert does have a good list and he tracks that pretty judiciously and watches that close. So yes, they do, they do complete those projects. And Jeff, how long do they have to finish a project? Is it six years?
It is, yes. It's, it's six years. And we just discussed in the COG as part of that Councilman Erickson is that we, we actually discussed that each beginning year that we start that, which usually traditionally is around March and April that we'll have our first COG, that we will have a whole reporting that will be given to us that then would be passed on to the county council also, that Jeff Gilbert will apply. And that includes all of the expenditures that are on the table, being spent, have spent, and what's coming up, which will help us give a bird's eye view of who all has funding in the table and in the COG or so to speak.
Okay, any other questions Dave? Did they answer your questions? All right. Okay, I assume so. Let's move on then to item 12B, Request for Exception to Resolution 2015-20.
I don't think we voted on that.
We, we just made it first.
Motion was made and seconded, so I'll call for a vote then, all in favor? Are there any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously then. Thanks John. 12B then Request for Exception to Resolution 2015-20. Suzanne Parker Realty. Let's see. Have we got someone on who wants to bring us up to speed on what? What we're looking at is as far as an exception. Chris, are you on?
I'm, uh, this is John Luthy. I'm on and Chris may be on as well. And Suzanne Parker was going to call in and make an initial invitation. If she's not on, I can-
It looks like she is.
Great.
Okay, John, go ahead. Why don't you lead out for us?
Suzanne Parker, and again, it looks like she's on, so she can elaborate or correct if I get things wrong. Suzanne's a real estate agent representing the owners of a parcel out in Clarkston, in the county, unincorporated county near Clarkston on Steam Creek Road, if anyone's familiar with that. The parcel number is 15-023-0014. Her clients are trying to sell the parcel and would like to be able to sell it as a buildable lot. And currently the only, that there are some requirements that they'll have to meet in terms of flood plain and and that sort of thing when they come in for zoning clearance, whoever builds on it. But the, the real hurdle right now is Resolution 2015-20, which you'll recall we'll be discussing as the next item and again in two weeks. And the, the situation here is that the road is, Steam Creek Road is maintained up to the parcel just prior to and on the other side of the street from Suzanne Parker's client's parcel. And so they're requesting an extension of road services to Suzanne's client's parcel. The, the snowplow, which is kind of the key one that's been discussed, goes to nearly her part, her client's parcel, but would then need to extend to, to allow for building. The recommendation from Matt Phillips, and if Chris is on, he could speak to this, is that the exception go ahead and be granted on the condition that the road be fully improved to, to current standards along the length of the parcel with the turnaround for the snowplow installed on the north end of the parcel. If, if that turnaround was installed at the north end of the parcel, it would improve the safety to the existing homes that are getting snowplow service. Currently the snowplow has to plow past a home and then back, back into that home's driveway. And if, if these folks were to improve the road for the turnaround at the end, then we wouldn't have a snowplow having to back to get turned around, having to back into a private driveway to get turned around. So for that reason, it would improve the safety for the existing home as well as whoever builds on this parcel. And so, so given that and the fact that the council's going to be examining Resolution 2015-20 at any rate, our office is recommending, and I believe Matt is and Chris as well, that the exception be granted. I'm sorry, we didn't have a image for you there. I could figure out how to share a screen if that would be helpful.
What you're saying is that the exception granted based on meeting the conditions of road improvement?
I guess two conditions, meeting conditions of road improvement, which they'd have to meet at any rate. And the, the turnaround for a snowplow or other services be installed on the north end of the property as opposed to any other place.
Okay.
How far a distance are we talking?
It's about 700 feet if I remember right, what the measure is.
Well, that's, I just approximately.
Well, yeah, about 700 feet of frontage.
What's the condition of the road now as far as to road standards or to county standards? Without being able to see a picture of this, or we got them going down a little dirt road? Or what, what actually is the condition of the road?
The road, the home that's existing, it is, it's either chip and seal or asphalt up to that property. As you go past that property, and this is where it would be extended, it does go to gravel. The width is, looks to be, excuse me, 20 feet. So to bring it to, to standard, doesn't look like it would have to be widened, but it does drop off precipitously toward this parcel. And so the, to meet the requirement so that the slope is not too great, if the snow fell, the snow plow did go off that road, you wouldn't want it to roll. So they would have to bring in fill along stretches of that frontage, just to have it not be as steep the slope going off the road would be the primary improvement, as I understand it.
Suzanne, would you like to add anything to our discussion?
No, I think you've pretty well covered it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, council.
I remembered one other thing that I ought to mention and I'd ask Chris to get on if he's heard anything. Matt was going to look into whether it would require a different snowplow or how far a snowplow would have to come because once you go off of the paved surface onto the gravel, it requires a different blade. Matt was possibly going to suggest that an additional condition be that the, the road be paved, which would be more than is required to meet the road standard. But possibly suggest that to get the exception from the county. But Matt, Matt's not been in touch with me today to, to say that. So I, I think we'd be okay. Representing that Matt Phillips is, is okay with approving the exceptions without it needing to be paved. Chris, have you heard anything in that regard?
I, I spoke with Matt just before we met at the road shop, that new road building they're putting together. There might be a benefit, there's a cost to the county of about $6,000 a year to extend that turnaround. So that's the info that I gained that, that I don't think Matt's been able to communicate to John. So I can share my screen if that's helpful. I can show you on the map unless you guys are already looking at that.
We're not looking.
That would be great, Chris.
Janine, if you'll let me, I'll click share screen and let me know if you see what you need to. Everybody see that property there?
Janine, it looks like we lost David Erickson. Can we get him back?
He fell off the wagon or just fell off the pitcher?
Yeah, I don't see Dave either.
He texted and said he was lost.
Okay, Chris, can you organize us a little bit? Which parcel are we talking about?
Okay, the property they're looking to build on is the parcel 15-023-0014.
Okay.
Current maintenance ends right here. That's Butter's property. And that the pavement ends somewhere in that area also. So when the garbage trucks come up or the plows come up, they're, they're stockpiling the garbage bins right there. And trucks are coming up and they're having to, I don't know if they're using this turnaround. My understandings are actually having to back up and come back. So what's being proposed is extending that maintenance to the north end of the property here.
Why would, why would we go that far, Chris?
Well, this slope right here on the west side of the road is very steep. It, the, the grade doesn't give you any room for recovery. If you go off the edge of that, your truck's going to roll.
Then how is that going to make this more safe by moving the road to there?
They'll have to fill along the extension of this road. And the best place for a turnaround, which is what they would need to put in place. So it looks like Matt's on. I'll let Matt address some of that. The best place for a turnaround is going to be up at that north end because of the grade and the topography of the property.
Why can't you put it right there where it ends? Yeah, right there.
Right there?
Yes.
I, I think it's back to that topography. I don't know how much fill you'd have to add there to make that work.
Well, it looks like they cut hay on it and stuff. I mean, I, I, I don't mind helping them out, but I think it's ridiculous to go the whole length of the property.
The only challenge that you see in these type of things is when somebody wants to develop a little bit further down. And it would mean that they would have to improve the road all through the Parker property up to their property. And so I think it's kind of been a situation where if you're going to ask the county to improve the road or you're going to ask the county to take over road, that you've got to take it to the end of your property.
I, I think Matt should probably address a lot of these pieces. I turned on that slope layer so you can see that. Anything that's red is a 30% or greater slope and the 20 to 30 is the yellow.
This is Matt. Can, can you guys hear me? I think they, they let me in.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
I'm going to jump in just briefly. This is John. Chris, while Matt speaks, if you pulled up the Google Maps Street View there at the Butters property, it's very easy to see the slopes there.
Okay.
I've, I've heard a couple of questions, so I'll try to answer the best I can. And if there's additional questions, I'll answer those as well. But Gordon, the current code for the county is that if you come in and do a development like this, you need to improve that road along the frontage of your property. So we would have the proponent propose that road all the way to the north end of their boundary.
That's the way I understood it. We've done it in the past.
That's what I thought too.
It would be nice to have the turnaround at the south end, but the topography where they are farming it, but there's probably estimated 10 foot drop off from the road to their fill. So if we created a turnaround at the south end, the topography doesn't lend itself well to us sliding off with a plow truck or just there'd be a lot of fill there. And then, and at the north end, it's actually flat where that turnaround would be almost at grade.
How about to the east of that road?
The east of that road, it's a, that's a bank. So that's, that other field on the east side is actually above the road. So this road was cut in along that side hill.
It's Suzanne. I think the north end has a drop off too.
The north, the north end is where they access with their farm equipment. And that's the, the safest, best place for a plow to, to create a 90 foot turnaround.
Oh, I get you, but it's still on a bit of a hill. It isn't flat there.
Is that road just a farm road? Is that the idea?
It is a farm road.
Sorry, it gets quite a bit of traffic. I've spent a lot of time out there and I guess it doesn't when the snow is down of course. But when I've been out there, there's been a lot of trucks and cars going up and down. I don't honestly know where they're going.
And when I jumped on, there was also a conversation about the widths and the, how that road is. It's actually a 20 foot wide gravel road. The road's in actually good shape. So the, the, the minimum improvements for the county would be to just make sure that the shoulders and stuff meet our, meet our standards.
Well, it appears as though from your conversation that it would maybe make it safer for the county to allow their graders and their garbage trucks and everything to go to the north end and turn around. Because of now, they go up that road and then they've either got to back into the Butters driveway or something similar to that, which always makes a concern. And then so if we did ask them to make a roundabout or a turnaround would be the proper word, then I think that would be beneficial to the, the county vehicles that have to go up there. And then you've also got to have it such that a fire truck can turn around.
You're right, Gordon. There's also at the south end of that, there's also some sight visibility issues where it kind of goes up and around a corner. And so if a trash truck was in the middle of a turn right there, it, it wouldn't be that easy to see him. You could, but you would be right there next to him when you finally seen him. So there's a little more visibility at the north end as well.
Look how pretty that map is with all those different designs. Has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but quite an interesting thing there.
How many acres is that ground?
It's about 12.55 acres. And the people who are buying the ground had planned to have their driveway about eight feet within the south boundary. The driveway to go down to their house.
Is it within eight feet of the oil road on the other side? Is it within eight feet of the oil road on the other side?
Well, it's, it's from the oil road to, uh, the property line is twenty feet or less. I measured seventeen feet. Somebody else measured twenty.
Yeah, but, but they want to make their ride into their place on the south end and we're gonna make them improve clear to the north end and drive trucks along that crappy road?
Yes, pretty much. The people who are, are buying it, it's a young couple and they just had twins and they just want to put a little house down off the south side there. And that's where they got, uh, everything on their well permit and everything was based on locating the house close to the south side.
Well, it seems to me like it's, it's an issue of what's, what's going to work the best. And even though it's expensive and will cost the property owners quite a bit, it doesn't sound to me like it's feasible to do at all unless the turna- turnaround isn't up on the north end.
Can I explain the position of the current owners of the property? They purchased the property thirteen years ago to put a house on themselves. They lived down in New Mexico. And they, uh, decided eventually, they're an elderly couple. They decided eventually not to build on it. And as an alternative, they're buying a summer home up in Bear Lake where they can meet up with their family up there because they have a lot of local family and, uh, that's why they decided to sell it. And, uh, I'm not representing the buyers, but the buyers are a young couple who moved up from Lehigh and they just want to have, you know, just some chickens or that kind of thing and some space around them. And I had them draw up where they would locate their house and they are locating it about the driveway about eight feet from, uh, the south boundary is what they proposed.
But, but with an extension of that road all the way through their property, then we're gonna have another request for possibly they could, they'll subdivide that off with that much good road.
No, they can't subdivide it off because you need your, uh, ten acres to subdivide it and they have no desire to subdivide it. And there's only twelve point five five acres. It sort of runs from the road and then it runs down to the creek. And it's a really a beautiful spot, you know? My people have just, uh, I helped them buy it thirteen years ago from the Malmberg. And it's just been sitting there, uh, probably being farmed for ages, you know?
Yeah, but as soon as that road's improved, then we got, we got the next problem. The next guy wants to build.
My people, the water, bought it as building, approved building lot and they, uh, pretty much did not. You know, it's not like somebody wanting to, uh, create, uh, get some land given to them from their farming family and maybe they could have enough land to plot the house on it. These people spent a hundred and fifty-five thousand thirteen years ago to purchase this land to put a home on it. And then they had their, uh, son-in-law resurvey it. We bought it as fourteen acres and their son-in-law, Theron Weston, who was with Cash Landmark, resurfaced it. And that's where we come up with the twelve point five five acres.
I would just say that, don't want to preview the next item too much, I guess, but, um, we will be recommending a fairly sunset resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty in the near term. In any event.
Well, uh, my clients are prepared to pay for the improvements because they have that money tied up in the place and they can't do anything unless they, uh, can sell it as a building lot. And we have people who want to live on it.
You know, I would honestly feel more comfortable considering this after we consider the next item so that we have a uniform way of approaching this for everyone. I don't want to do something for one person that others will look at and say, well, why can't you do that for me? I want to make sure that we're fair and I would rather consider it after considering the next item.
I agree because I don't, you can consider with that being a resolution because we've kind of lived by that or tried to. So I, I agree with you, Gina.
I agree with her too. We can always pay, table this for another meeting. It doesn't have to be passed today. And then we can do this other one and then make a decision so that there, uh, everything is considered and it's dealt with fairly.
You, you could even possibly table it till just after we discuss the next item as well.
If we do this to that property, we allow that to happen, the property just up on the north end, we would have to then do the same thing for them.
Correct.
If they came in. And then, hang on, there's another property to the north of that that would probably want to maybe do another turnaround. And then next thing you know, we are right back to ground zero of a whole bunch of roads that we can't afford right now to take care of.
One of the problems that we had in the past, and I think I mentioned this last meeting is a number of years ago, we were approving these and we'd prove them all at the end of the gravel road and then, um, no one would improve the gravel road. And so the county, after a whole bunch of residents moved in there, then we had five homes on a gravel road and all that traffic and no one had improved it. So Joe taxpayers, ones that ended up, uh, paying for the improvement of that road. And that's why this is tightened up just a little bit, that if you're gonna build on these kind of roads, you're going to do it uh, so that it don't cost the county. You pay for it just like you would in a city where the subdivisions are built. And so, you know, I'll tell you how I feel on this and how I would vote. And that is, is if we decide that we're gonna allow uh, a building permit on this piece of property, then we will, to get my vote, you're gonna have to do the roundabout on the north and you're gonna have to uh, improve that road to the county standards. And, and that way, as you follow what Dave Erickson is saying, the next person up there, to be fair with him, he would have to do the same. And he would have to improve the road to the end of his property. If you don't do it that way, then the guy above this here would end up improving the road through this Barker place and then all the way up through his place. And that's where you start getting, uh, yourself in a real problem is somebody's getting a, a building lot without having to pay anything for it. The reason why building lots in the city are so expensive is because all those roads and the, and the, the costs of, of a subdivision are all, they're all evenly divided up among everyone. If you start doing these out in the county and not ask for any, uh, any road improvement or any improvement of any kind, they become very, very, very cheap lots compared to the city. And that's why you see all these people looking for a piece of property out in the, in the county and then trying to get a cheap lot out of it to build a home on.
I'd say that the recommendation you just made is the one that, as I understand, that, that Matt and Chris and I are recommending.
So we're all in unison then on that. And that would be a, they'd improve the road to the county standard to the end, north end of their property with a turnaround for that's, the specs that a fire truck can get turned around in. And then it would help, it would help the county garbage people and maybe a school bus or whatever else might have to go up there. Now it's kind of a concern because of the fact that you go to the Butter's property and when I'm, I'm using these words loosely means I don't know where the home is and I don't know which Butter's family it is. But you go up to that and there's just no place to turn a snowplow or to turn a garbage truck or anything there unless you back it up on private property. And then you start getting liability from that when you get back a county vehicle across private property and do damage.
Any other discussion or comment?
Yeah, I'm not in favor until we review that other, until we review it or change that over.
I agree. I'm just telling you, you know, how I'm looking at this one is what we know now.
Gordy, you see it as an exception rather than maybe what some of the property owners to the north would, would want. Is that right?
I wished we could go out and see the property to see exactly what's going on, but, um, I, I'm really against what we were doing in the past where you get a gravel road like this and you'd have three or four property owners that could build five homes on it with not an improved road. And then you and I and all the other taxpayers of the county would end up paying the, the costs of, of, um, having homes there. I'm, I'm not ready to vote on it. I'm, I, I want to see what we're gonna do with the next one. And then we'll have to apply similar standards both ways.
Well, that road's good there.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's a good picture.
That's the road. This, this property here on the left is the one that, um, Ms. Parker's trying to sell. Here's the slope coming up to the right. You can see the drop all along here on the left. As we turn around, there's the Butter's home that we're talking about. And the pavement ends about here.
This is out in Clarkston.
Yes, out in Clarkston. And then the driveway, the, the snowplows are turning around in his back in this area. So they, they now just pass the driveway and then pull back. And Ms. Parker's asking to be able to.
The other thing to remember in these cases is, uh, this, this property is still eligible to come in and rest a, a, uh, subdivision upgrade to five acre lot, which would be two homes and, and even a two, two acre lots. I mean, there's no law that says that they can't do that, even though you're hearing them say that they have no intentions of that. All they have to do is decide that's what they want to do and into, into the county zoning office, they come with a, with a request to make a zoning change. And so whenever you hear someone say, we never intend on that, well, they never intend on that until their situation changes. And, uh, we gotta apply the law and that they're, they're eligible to make an application for a subdivision on this property. Whether they will or not, I don't know. It's none, none of my business, but my county ordinance, they do have an opportunity to subdivide that if they want to.
They have an opportunity to request for a rezon.
Yes.
They can request it.
Well, I, unless there's any objection, I think we should table, uh, twelve B and we should, uh, move into a discussion of, uh, consideration of resolution twenty fifteen twenty so that we can be on, be on the same page for everybody and decide where we're going to go with, with that resolution going forward. And in fact, it may be, I don't know that we can even come to any conclusion on that item until in this meeting. I don't, I don't have enough background or information to really make a decision. How do the rest of you feel?
I agree with you. We need more information and, um, this, this pandemic is gonna last forever and, and we need to make a good decision with what is actually out there, not what we see as pictures.
Well, I don't know that anything has changed the reasons that we made that resolution. I don't think they've gone away.
We, you asked, um, Meem and Chris and Matt to look into the issues, um, around that resolution. And we've spent some uh, time doing that over the last few weeks. We've, um, I've looked, of course, I've looked at legal issues and Matt and Chris have looked at at other issues on that. We don't have recommendations for you tonight. Wanted to update you that we, we are looking at those issues that we anticipate having some recommendations for, um, as alternatives to resolution twenty fifteen dash twenty. Based on your discussion of the last meeting, when you asked us to look into this, um, it was noted that that resolution was intended to be temporary, um, fix and, and and then there would then be some more long-term approaches later and it's in five years. So you asked us to look at some long-term approaches. We'll have those kinds of suggestions in a couple of weeks. We can say that, um, we are going to recommend a sunset to this resolution in the short term and look at some other solution.
Yeah, well, we may have a sunset to the resolution, but the problem that the resolution was originally written to address hasn't been solved.
You're, you're right. And, and that's where we're still, um, wanting to prepare some more detailed suggestions or options for addressing the problem.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we table a discussion until we have as, as well as a request until we have that discussion when he has options or some information of why we, why we should sunset it and why we should change it.
Second.
All in favor of tabling this would be both, uh, twelve B and twelve C in this case on this agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
No, I'll say we, we asked that be put on the agenda just to give you an update since you'd passed this with, with looking into it. We didn't anticipate a vote on, on that tonight. We just wanted to give you that brief update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Suzanne, I'm sorry. Apologize to your clients. But we just aren't in a position to make a wise decision. Thank you.
Carl?
Yes.
Yes, one question that is that, as I read that resolution, there's kind of a natural sunset clause in it because it was set for five years.
Yeah.
And five years is up on August twenty fifth, two thousand fifteen, when, when it was started. So five years is this August. So it automatically, unless we have something to change it, adapt to it, automatically is over, right?
Over, continued.
Unless we continue it.
Right.
Okay.
The sunset, I think on this particular thing was there, so it'll be revisited.
Right.
We need to do that. We need to do that. We really need to look at it and decide.
But right now, there's no action that has to be required of this because it's naturally going to end August twenty fifth of twenty twenty.
Correct.
Erickson, I'm not seeing that language in the resolution itself.
I don't see that either.
I thought it said five years in there.
That's, uh, that was what was discussed.
There was possibly some discussion to that effect at the time that the resolution was adopted, but there's not language to that effect in the resolution.
Yes, I'm in a meeting.
I remember when we had this, I was going through this. I, I thought it said five years.
It's just sitting there.
For a period of five years.
The window's dirty, but other than that, it's good.
John, you might want to mute, mute yourself.
I thought I, I thought.
Now you're muted.
Anyway, okay, I just, I thought I'd read in some things there that it was for five years. So.
Well, let's, let's get some information together. We need to decide where we're going to go with this for the long term, I think. Certainly the money to provide additional services isn't present. Uh, hasn't improved in the, in the, in the last five years. So we, we have some pretty serious things to, to chew over and, and decide on how we're gonna best help our, help our county citizens uh, do the things they need to do and yet still have the funds to take care of it all. Okay, is there any other business that we need to conduct today? All right, council member reports, uh, let me go to a gallery view. Gina, have you got anything else to cover?
Yeah, um, since Jill's with us, I have a question and I did ask Jill about this earlier, but I also saw it on social media that people have had some questions about the letter that went out from the clerk's office about, um, returning a questionnaire of what ballot you want. And there was some confusion over if I'm already registered with a party, do I need to fill that out and turn it back in? If I don't, will I not get a ballot? And I wondered, Jill, if you could just clarify for us, might, so we know what to tell people.
Okay, um, we've had some calls, but the majority of the people are not questioning it and sending in their papers. So they're just filling them out. But what it is, is if you are already re- re- uh, registered as a Republican-
Uh registered as a Republican, then you will automatically get a ballot. Or as a Democrat, but if they're unaffiliated, which is the majority of the county. They will have to do choose to in order to get a ballot. So what that was doing was sending it out more information to those who are unaffiliated. That they must choose which ballot they want. But we've received a a lot of the forms back just in the last two days.
Great.
Thank you, Jill. That's all I had.
I I think it's a good letter that was sent out because there's a lot of people that. The now they can question what they want to do, if they want to affiliate themselves or not, otherwise. If they didn't get a ballot, then you'll really have a lot of questions, why didn't I get with this, why couldn't I change here? And so I think it's a great letter, so.
Thanks.
Barbara?
Yes.
Have you got anything to to discuss?
Only that we're, yeah, only that we're continuing to work on the wraps. Issue and it's a work in progress and that's all I have.
Thank you, Gordy.
Um very much enjoyed the the tour that we had up there at the the road shed weed weed uh housing place. It is going to be quite a facility up there. I'm I'm just kind of excited about see uh how this is all going to play out and how. How many efficiencies it will it will help, the only question I had and I expressed it up there is that huge, huge, huge building. With uh storage of all the equipment in that. I'm a little concerned if that's going to be able to to be above freezing all the time, but. I'm I'm not the engineer and whatnot, but uh. I just know how if it gets if it gets twenty degrees out there and the thing that's really. Concerning up there is you have got a a canyon breeze coming out of there, I don't know how many of you happen to be up on. Uh mountain crest campus when that breeze was coming out of there in the morning and those kids walked over to the cemetery seminary building. Uh boy, it just about froze them from just that little walk. So it'll be interesting to see that, but I think it's really, really an impressive. It's a very impressive facility. Uh the other thing that uh I'm trying to think what the other thing that I had on my mind that I'd like to express. It's a sign that I'm getting older, I can only think of one thing at a time. Anyway, if I think about it, I'll ask for a little bit more time, but um. Enjoyed, I actually enjoyed visiting with all of you, you know, I got to grab a hold of uh. The pink hat, the pink hat and give it a little jerk around to make sure Barbara knew that I was there and and um. So anyway, it was it was enjoyable to be with you instead of just looking at you on the movies. But thanks to be a part of you.
Thank you, Gordon. Paul, anything for us?
Well, I just wanted to say how grateful I am to be out of quarantine, actually be in the uh in the courthouse again, it's great to great to be there. And the only thing I have this week is to compliment Sheriff Jensen. And his light touch in handling uh kind of this whole situation. We've seen across the country, some folks that really have seized on the opportunity to really take a heavy hand. And I appreciate the way the sheriff has responded to some of the complaints coming in as we work to try to uh. Responsibly open and and move out of this quarantine period, so. I'm glad we had a proclamation and I just wanted to add that compliment to the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Paul. John?
Just glad to be alive. No, I I appreciate what all of you do, I think the sheriff's just a. A breath of fresh air to what what it used to be.
Yes, he is.
And I I think he's, the people are efficient. And I think they have a better attitude toward the public too, I've had people say that, you know, that when if they get pulled or whatever. They understand that everybody's stressed and I think they've handled that very well. I think the progress on the building's slow, I see it quite often, I swerve in there because it's on my way to go somewhere, but. Man, it seems like it's taking forever to get that sewer pipe in that other road. But it's going to be great to have something on the south end.
Yeah, that's great. Dave, what have you got?
Well, apologize I couldn't be there for the tour. But uh I I was hoping that I just had one question that maybe uh next meeting that Craig could probably. Share with us how Smithfield's filing for EMS. How that will maybe affect us as a county. You know, we could just share a little bit on that, you know, there I I noticed there's a filing, they're trying to get their. There you at the EMS EMS number and then also uh. I think I have heard so many positive things about as we open the county up. I've heard so many positive comments about. When people are out and and complimentary of all the businesses and the restaurants and and the. When they go in there that you can just tell that they really care about the health of the people. And they're doing everything they can and uh to try to just. Tone down a little bit of the panic and to just get some confidence back into what the, you know, what we can be here in Cache County. Uh and I I've heard a lot of that, a lot of people want to open it up a lot faster. Uh and I think there's some merit to some of that, but I think there's also some merit to uh. Slow things down and kind of do it methodically so that we don't cause some crazy panic and then the blame game. Start up later if something does happen, but I think uh. It's 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 good, it's we're we're getting back into it, the airplanes are only about half full when you're flying. Uh ha- half the people are have your masks and all that stuff and about half of them don't. Uh it's just really interesting uh. You know, people are still cordial out there as you travel, but uh it's some people are. They're just uh taking it extremely uh crazy overboard and I don't know what their experiences are, but. About half and half when you're traveling or adhering to masks and all those things and the other half saying, hey. Let's build the herd immunity, so anyway, it's a. I think uh things are going good and I do have to also compliment the people here in Cache County, how. How respectful that they are and. As something emotionally arises, you know, we're pretty strong here in the Cache Valley area, we can handle. Most everything that comes our way, so I compliment them for that and. It's good to see you guys in face, I still like the Zoom meetings, but uh I'm kind of excited also to get back to. You know, see if John is wearing cologne or not, so.
I shaved. I won't be able to wear my flip flop, so that's bad.
Thank you, Dave, Bryce, you're still on, uh can you take his uh question about EMS up in Smithfield and? And give us a report on in our next meeting?
I'm here.
Okay, can you take uh Dave's request about the EMS service up in Smithfield and? Uh be prepared to give us some information in our next meeting?
You bet and uh Dave, I'll touch base with you, get the whole uh whole breadth of your question.
You bet.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you all, if there's nothing else, we'll adjourn. And uh this hammer this time. And uh hopefully, maybe we've got uh we'll we'll get past it enough to be able to meet.